Okay, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join the Councilman's channel? In the pleasure of the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Let us pray. Okay, we just thank you for today. We thank you for sunshine. God, as so many of our citizens are suffering and dealing with floodwaters and washed-out roads and personnel who are responding to all of those things, God, we pray that you would be with them, allow them to feel your presence, and allow us as your community to be your hands and feet, reaching out. Pray for this meeting tonight. May it be pleasing in your sight. May you give wisdom to those gathered here. It's in your son's holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Fields. Called to order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of May 21st. Second item on the agenda is community announcements, recognitions. We've had, we've got some new faces that are in front of you every, every other Tuesday or so, but we also have some new faces that are kind of behind the scenes. And Jim Olgren, would you introduce our, one of our newest members who hasn't even started yet, but is soon to, who joined the team?
I'd be honored. I'd be honored. This is my replacement, Kristin Ellensbeck, and she actually did start on Monday, so that she returned today, so.
That's a good sign.
That's a good thing. So, Kristin, this is our mayor and city council.
Kristin, welcome.
Welcome.
You want to, you want to tell us and the, and the public a little bit about yourself?
Um, sure, so.
Now, you only have five minutes.
All right. So, my name's Kristin Elsenbeck, and my background is about 14 years of human resources experience in retail, and then most recently with the state of Oklahoma, and I was really excited about the opportunity to serve my community here in Guthrie. So, in a nutshell, that's me.
Very good. Very good. Well, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And I'm sure we'll be having a few more words for you in your retirement coming up, isn't it, coming up pretty soon? Item number three is the consent agendas A and B. A is the approval of our Public Works meeting, and, well, let's see, of May 7th. And B is looking to me to be the same thing.
It's 64th.
64th.
Oh, I'm sorry, because we had the transition between, yes, of the 64th, the city council, and approval of the Guthrie Public Works meeting of the 63rd city council of May 7th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes, please. Let's see the votes, I think.
All votes are in.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of those present to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Item number four, discussion and acceptance of the fiscal year annual financial statement and auditor's report.
Chris Heim with our HBC auditors is here to present the FYET audit.
Chris?
Good evening.
Evening.
Like Kim said, my name is Chris Heim. I was the manager of this engagement. I'd like to thank the council for having us and engaging us to perform this audit. Also like to thank Kim and Jesse. When we come in here, we're a little bit of an inconvenience. We asked for a lot of documents in a short amount of time, and those were provided in a timely and quick, complete manner, so we appreciate that, so. I'm going to start on page five, our auditor's report. It's about 100 pages here, but I'm going to hit about 10 or 12 of them, and then if you guys have any questions at the end, I can help out with those. So, on page five, this is our auditor's report. I'm just going to walk down the, that page and kind of explain the paragraphs.
Okay.
So, first paragraph there just states that we have audited the financial statements. The second paragraph describes what management's responsibilities are. Management is responsible for these financial statements. Management is also responsible for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal controls at the city of Guthrie. The third paragraph, under auditor's responsibility, what is our responsibility as auditors? We are required to express an opinion on these financial statements. In that same paragraph, we are responsible for performing this engagement in accordance with government auditing standards. The fourth paragraph, under auditor's responsibility, this describes what we do. So, our audit involves performing procedures to obtain evidence. So, these procedures we perform are based on our judgments. We'll come in here, we'll perform risk assessments. Based on those risk assessments, one area of the audit might get more testing the other depending on the risks as we go through this engagement. So, in making those risk assessments, we consider your internal controls as we're going through the audit. We don't express an opinion on those internal controls, but we do look at them as we're going through our procedures. And we'll touch base with that on our second report that we issue on the back, in the back there. The fifth paragraph just states that we believe that we obtained sufficient and appropriate evidence to form an opinion. And then the last paragraph on that page, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So, that's a clean opinion, and that's the best opinion that we can offer as auditors. Okay. From there, I'm going to go to page 11. So, pages seven through 16 is the management discussion and analysis. This provides a narrative format of the, the year that you had, and it provides comparatives, as you'll see in the middle of that page, 2018 to 2017. It'll have a percent difference between the two years. So, I'm just going to hit on just three differences that kind of stuck out. Current assets increased 41% from the previous year. That was primarily due to increase in cash, and the increase in cash was due to increase in revenues. Sales tax increased, I believe, 7%, and then you had some other increases as well on grants and things like that. So, that was the primary reason for that 41% increase. Current liabilities increased about $300,000. That was due, just due to some construction projects that were outstanding at the end of the year, so they just hadn't been paid at that time. So, just a timing, timing difference on that, why current liabilities in the middle increased by $300,000. And then I'm going to touch on the bottom right-hand of that schedule there, the unrestricted net position. That increased about $4 million from the previous year, which, if we'll skip to page 13, it'll give us detail on that. So, similar to the previous schedule, we have comparatives of 2018 and 2017. This is your revenues over expenditures. I'm going to hit some, four items on this page. The top-line item there, charges for services, increased by 20%. This was primarily due to the E-911 revenues and some court fines increasing. There are a lot of other increases, miscellaneous revenue increases, but those were the two big items there. Skip down two lines to capital grants and contributions. This increased about $400,000 from the prior year. This was due to the Safe Routes grant and the airport grant. And then two more lines down, intergovernmental revenue. If you'll go over to the business type column, you'll see a decrease of negative, or decrease of 100%. And that was just due to the ODOT project that was in the prior year, that nothing occurred in the current year, so. And then if you'll drop down to the bottom right-hand of the schedule again, your revenues over expenditures for 2018 was $3.4 million, so essentially your net income for 2018. And that was, the increase in the previous schedule was due to that $3.4 million. So, from there, I'm going to jump to page 15. So, seven through 16 was the management discussion and analysis, and then 18 through 28 are just statements, financial statements, for the assets and liabilities, revenues and expenditures. It just breaks it down more, and as you go through these 100 pages, you'll get, the more you go back, the more detail you get on the numbers here. So, I'm not going to touch on, on these two pages, but I just wanted to point, 18 and 19 are the city as a whole. You'll see the governmental activities column and your business-type activities column, and that's where the whole city is just brought in together on these two pages. If you'll look on page 19, this statement of activities, your revenue expenditures again, but it's provided in a different format. You have your governmental activities on the top there, and then your business-type activities in the middle column. And if you look at the bottom right again, that 3.4 million, the net income or revenues over expenditures is at the very bottom, and that kind of, this just provides a lot more detail than that schedule that we just looked at, so. From there, I'm going to jump to page 21. And again, just more detail, this is the governmental funds. I'm going to specifically just look at the general fund column, and the bottom unassigned fund balance of $2.1 million. So, your unassigned fund balance represents the fund balance that has not been assigned to other funds, hasn't been restricted, committed, or assigned. The level of unassigned fund balance is an indication of the amount of unexpended or unencumbered funds that the city has, that they can use for the rollover to the next year's budgetary. They can use it for shortfalls or unexpected needs. So, there's $2.1 million in the general fund, and when we, when we're looking at other cities, 10 to 30% of your general fund revenues is, I guess, a preferred amount to have, and the city, city of Guthrie is sitting at about 18%. So, you're right in the middle of that 10 to 30% of where you'd want that unrestricted or unreserved fund balance to be. So, that's a positive there. I'm going to jump to page 26, and we're going to look at the same thing there except for on the PWA. And at the bottom, unrestricted fund balance is 2.4 million. It's a little different than the general fund because the PWA has more debt obligations that it has to meet, so that percentage needs to be a little higher on the business-type activities. So, looking at 30 to 50% of your unrestricted, unrestricted net position here, and the city is sitting at about 42%. So, again, right in the middle of that range, and that's, so that's a positive there. And then I'm going to jump to page 39. So, the pages we skipped just give some background on the city, describes the accounting policies of the city, and just some background information. Page 39 is where the numbers start to pick up again and give more detail. So, these are the notes of the financial statements, and page 39, note disclosure two there, describes the cash, cash equivalents, and investments. So, on the bottom of that schedule, you'll see the $9.4 million. If you look at the financial statements that we looked at, you'll see the $9.4 million, but you'll just see a line item that says cash and cash equivalents. This, though, will put, this schedule describes what that is actually invested in. So, demand deposits of $7.7 million, there's that cash on hand of $1,300, time deposits, and you can just see the breakdown there of your cash and cash equivalents, so. From there, I'm going to jump to 42. I like to go over the capital assets and debt of the cities when we present their, this is a schedule of your beginning capital assets for the year, and it'll show the additions, disposals, and then the ending capital assets. You had about around, just over $2 million in asset additions. The major additions for the year were the airport runway rehab, about $600,000. Safe routes to school project was about $400,000, and then the freight liner truck, $347,000. So, 42 and 43 will show your note disclosures on the capital assets. And if we go to 44, this will show the debt that the city has. So, there's about five pages in addition to this that will describe debt, if you want to review those. That'll give the interest rates and the payments of these debt amounts. The only new addition to debt was that freight liner truck, and you'll see that in the additions column, the $347,000. The others are accrued compensated absences, not debt that you actually took out from third parties, so. And just note, the, the most significant debt is the 2016 and 13 revenue series bonds, and that line item is under the business-type activities. It is a total of $15.3 million. Okay? And then from there, I'm going to go to, skip to page 87, which is our second report. What I skipped over was, there were some disclosures on other liabilities. There is pension, pension information that takes up about 15 to 20 pages of the notes. So, but we're going to hit our, our second report, which is the report on internal control and compliance. So, this is what we call a byproduct of what we do. Like I said earlier, our objective is to express an opinion on the audit. So, as we're going through these procedures, we will look at, look at your internal controls, but we won't form an opinion on those controls. So, I'm going to do what I did on the, the first report, our auditor's report, and just kind of walk down the report here. The first paragraph, this is a repeat summary of what the auditor's report says, we're required to do our audit in accordance with government's auditing standards. Second paragraph, we decide, we design our procedures to express an opinion on these financial statements. We don't design our procedures to express an opinion on your effective, effectiveness of your controls, so. Third paragraph has some definitions. A deficiency internal, a deficiency in internal control, this is where a designer operation in your control does not allow management or employees to prevent or detect misstatements. So, examples of these would be not having the proper segregation of duties. If there was an employee who didn't do the bank reconciliations in a timely manner, you know, we waited three or four months to do bank reconciliations. Lack of review of expenditures would be another deficiency in internal control. So, those are some examples. A significant deficiency is something that maybe had rose to the level that we need to present to the council. In the past, three or four years ago, there, that something did rose, rise to that level, and there was a significant deficiency finding. However, we do not have one in the current year, and that states that, in the fourth paragraph, that we do not have any findings for the current year. So, no deficiencies in internal control that we found during our procedures. And then the fifth paragraph, similar to the internal controls, as we're going through our procedures, we have to look at your compliance with laws and regulations. So, an example of that would be you purchase capital assets, and we have to look at to see if you, we're in compliance with the state bidding laws. We don't set out to see if you're in compliance with the state bidding laws, but if there's capital assets that might fit into that bucket, then we would look at that, so. And with the compliance, we did not find any noncompliance in our testing as well, so. And then the last report that we have is, I think, two pages. So, this is an additional report on compliance and internal control. It's actually a separate audit that was required due to the federal funding that was received. If you get over $750,000 in expended, expended federal funds, then a uniform guidance audit is required. So, we look at the major programs within those federal expenditures, and we did not have any findings in that audit as well. So, that is a compliance audit to test if you essentially did what you're supposed to do in accordance with the federal grant that you got. So, you receive those funds, you expended them, and then we come in and say, we have a checklist that, did you do this, did you do that? And we didn't have any findings on that, so. And that's our three reports that we issue, and I can open it up to questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Any questions of Chris by the council?
Yeah, I got one.
Yes.
On page 41.
Okay, let me get there. Okay?
It shows we're carrying $9.2 million of receivables for ambulance fees. How far back does that go?
Off the top of my head, I don't know how far that goes back.
Is it something that just keeps rolling over?
It does.
It does, and that's why that allowance is there. So, essentially, the ambulance fees, the net accounts for ambulance fees is $185,000.
Right, we're carrying $9.2 million, but we only consider $180,000 of it good money.
Correct. And I, and I, I can't tell you, off the top of my head, I don't know how far that goes back.
So, that's, that's basically the difference between billing and what insurance companies will, will pay? Is that correct?
Well, it's what we collect and what we build, is what that is.
The, the ambulance fees.
We build $9.2 million.
Correct.
And we show $185 of that.
$9.2 million is what should have been collected on.
Right.
Right, over years and years and years.
And I know these aren't your numbers.
Right.
You know, you just put them together, but my concern with it, everybody sitting up here, if we've been carrying that for 10 years, that's a million a year that's going out the door. You know, if we've been carrying it for five years, that's $2 million a year that's going out the door.
Back as we have in the books.
And I know, I know tonight, you know, is not the time to iron it out, but I kind of want to point that out to everybody that's sitting up here. I think down the road, we need to look at our process for billing, how we pursue it, how we go after, you know, a lot of the services are like for car accidents. There's a lot of insurance companies out of accidents that will pay those bills if we pursue them right. I'm a.
We use, just so you know, we use a third-party contractor, Intermedix, to do, handle all of our billing. We don't do that in-house.
Well, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not pointing blame at who did it. I'm just saying, when we bill $9 million and $180,000 of it is all we consider good, there's, there's a pretty.
Well, we, I, I, to not understand these numbers, I mean, we collect more than that in a year, so.
Oh, for sure.
Right, I know, but.
Yeah.
When that larger, you know, it's same deal. See, we go to the same kind of calls that the ambulance does a lot of times with the accidents, and there's always going to be shrinkage there, some you can't collect on for whatever reason. People don't have insurance, don't have money, don't have a way to get it. But there's an acceptable percentage, and I think we need to look into, you know, how much we collect versus how much we get back to see that we're, you know, to me, when we talked to Chris over the softball complex or the sports complex, and he says, I think about $10 million bucks, we could build a pretty decent one, and we're going, well, here's $9 million of it, we just keep carrying over, and, and you'll get in that rut of letting that stuff get away. I know we do. You really have to pursue it and cover all your bases. I don't know, maybe the people doing the billing don't pursue it like they should, or maybe we need to look at another way to, I know we don't do the billing, but maybe we need to look at another way to bill it or another, we need to look at our whole system. I think there's too much going out the back door there, is my deal. I'm not pointing fingers that we're not doing it, I just want to put it on you guys' mind up here that I think that's money running out the back door that we should be getting a bigger piece of.
We can, we can certainly, Eric could be an individual that would obviously need to, need to be involved with this, and he's involved with a few other things tonight, but we can certainly be looking at, at this, either have a workshop on it.
Yeah, if we need to do a workshop or at the.
And drill down a little bit. I don't know how many years that $9 million represents, but it's significant, obviously. And, you know, I know how insurance companies work too, as you do.
Right.
And so, we need, we need to know a little bit more about that. I think it's a good question to raise, and whether it's appropriate for a workshop or just another presentation here.
Right, we need to find what our ratios are, you know, as far as what we're actually billing and what we're getting back, and how much is getting through the cracks, and I, you know, to me, that's just a big number, but still, even if it's 10 years, it's a million bucks a year.
Yeah.
And.
It's probably at least 10, but.
At least, yeah.
But anyway, we don't have that, don't have that information.
Right, I know we don't, but I, my main point was, I think it's something we need to look at, because it's, you know, and it's real easy, too, to not get that information of the correct place to bill and who to pursue and all that, when it's not your money, when you're getting a paycheck already. You know, when, when we go to those things, I'm the only guy that rolls up there that's not getting a paycheck. Everybody else is getting a paycheck, so maybe that's the reason it's sore spot with me. I have to go after those details if I want to be paid, because that's the only way I do. So, maybe that's the reason it stuck out, but.
Yeah, we can, we can have a presentation on the process and, and more specifics on what those numbers really represent.
Yeah.
Okay? All right. Anybody else have a question? Okay, well, it sounds like, Chris, that it appears to be a pretty clean audit.
Yes, sir.
The, you know, certainly a positive financial position represented. We're pretty much in the middle of the road in terms of money that we have in, in reserve, if you will.
Yes, sir.
So, that's always a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
And, and a positive, a positive future, so looks, looks pretty positive.
Yep.
Okay. I will entertain then a motion to accept the financial report. We have a motion, I'll entertain a second. Have a motion and a second. Any other, any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval then to accept the annual financial statement and auditor's report. Chris, thank you very, very much. Item number six, discussion, possible action to award bid number 2019-03 to Urban Contractors for three critical sewer lines, 9th and 10th between Warner and Mansour, between Rosebrier Creek and Bird Creek Lake Lane, I'm sorry, and between Park and Drexel.
Okay.
Staff?
Staff worked with Myers Engineering to develop the bid specs, and the bids went out in April. They were opened in May, on May 14th. We only received two bids, and we're recommending that we awarded to Urban Contractors for $135,000. The funds are available in the C-MOM fund, which is dedicated for this type of project.
So, we can cover it.
I'll make a motion, we accept it then.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then for moving forward with award bid number 2019-03. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we, the Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we, the Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned, and I call toward our city council meeting. We have two items on our consent, I'm sorry, four items on our consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the 64th city council meeting of May 7th. Approval of the minutes of the 65th city council meeting, also of May 7th. Approval of the minutes of the special city council workshop of May 14th, and confirmation of the GPWA action, accepting the annual financial statement and auditor's report.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda items A through D. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Trent.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of consent agenda items A through D. Item number three, discussion, possible action, resolution 2019-09, casting a vote for Robert Johnson to fill trustee-at-large position with the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund. Do you have any information on that, staff?
I, city manager recommended voting for the gentleman on the agenda.
Mr. Johnson, I know is a city manager in a city in southeast, I believe.
I think so.
Oklahoma, known well to our city manager, has been on the Board of Trustee for a fair, fair period of time.
Yeah.
And is, so would be returning to that role. I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Same way, as far away. So moved.
And a second.
Say.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Trent.
Unanimous approval then of resolution 2019-09, vote, a positive vote for Robert Johnson to fill trustee-at-large position. Item number four, discussion, possible action for resolution 2019-10, requesting quality event designation for the 2001 barrel fortuities for the American World Championships held at the Lazy E in November. Staff comments?
Justin's going to present this.
Get to tell us all about it. Are you, are you going to be riding in this?
He's a rodeoer from way back.
You look like a barriler.
This is getting awkward. There's a program through the Oklahoma Tax Commission, which is a tax rebate program where competitive events that have looked at different states, if they choose to hold their event in Oklahoma, they can apply to have a certain amount of state tax money rebated to them. And all this is, is the city approving a resolution to be the, the host city. And all that means is that after their event, city staff will submit some numbers, generic term, numbers, to the tax commission. And then the tax commission will then pass through some funds through the city that get paid out to the event. So the city doesn't actually lose any tax, city sales tax over this, the state rebates them some money through the program.
We just make, we just make sales tax off of this, right?
We receive, yeah.
Yes.
And we receive it, and then we pay it out to the lazy.
So it's a, it's a bottom-line positive for Guthrie.
Yes.
Okay? And we, and we do this every year, don't we?
We have done this, I think, a couple times for a particular rodeo. This is a brand-new rodeo that's coming to Lazy E in November. It's the first year they've had this particular one.
Okay.
So this is a, a large event, and it's their first time to have it there at Lazy E, so it's a pretty big get for them.
Good. And for us.
Will you be riding in it?
Sure, sure.
It's barrel race.
I don't even know what that is, but it sounds like a good time.
That ought to sell some tickets.
Oh, no, I will not be doing that. Thanks for clarifying that, councilman case.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to approve that resolution.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
All votes, Trent.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from those council present to approve resolution 2019-10. City manager is not here, he's on personal vacation. Item number six, comments from city council, councilman channel.
Well, I get to go first twice in a row, don't I?
You are just a lucky man, special.
I'm all-time reading posts where people's wanting a job. Go to the Guthrie website. Guthrie has several jobs posted. Maybe it's what you need. I know they have public works jobs posted and several different positions, so check them out. Maybe you could get hooked up with the city. When you're done with all that, go home, water your grass. We need to lower the level in the lake, so go home and water your grass. It'll help us all out.
Councilman case.
Yes, yes, very, very good, Don. Everybody be safe. There's a lot of water out there, don't drive into it. Keep in touch with the elder you know, especially on the west side. Make sure everybody's doing good. That's it.
Councilman Taylor.
And the elder on the west side, okay. Also, congrats tonight to the award winners. We were with the American Leagues a while ago, and they were handing out some money to the winners in the float division, so that was really a nice deal. And thanks, staff, appreciate what you do, appreciate our new pads tonight. Maybe I can figure out how to operate this hardware, and I'll figure something out. And as the saying goes, when you see high water, please don't drive off into it. We've already, I've been watching them, and so people have been driving in high water. Please don't do that. The police and the fire don't have time to mess with, they're trying to do other things. It's just as important, so.
Oh.
That's it.
Councilman Long?
Turn around, don't drown, I think is the words he was looking for.
That's probably really what I'm thinking.
There you go.
That'd be, sound better.
So just second, every, all of what everyone else has said, just be safe out there. As well as congratulations to all the Guthrie graduates that just graduated this last weekend. So congratulations to them, and that's all I got.
Okay. Well, I think, I speak for the whole council and in the city. When we, when we say we're, we, our hearts and prayers go out to those people that are negatively impacted by the high water. Sometimes we think that that water only shows up right when it's raining, and we're seeing ample evidence that the runoff that comes eventually down, down the creeks and streams hits us, as you're seeing pictures of it, and impacts a lot of people in our community. And, and while I'm saying that, thanks to first responders, police, fire, our, our entire city crew, who are out there working diligently to make sure that people don't drive through the water, and try to protect them as best that they possibly, possibly can. I don't know who cars, whose car that is.
Wasn't that perfect?
But, but.
He's driving this, so.
But we have the license plate. But seriously, folks, we, we appreciate everybody's concern. Our prayers are with you. This has been a devastating storm for us, and hopefully, we're seeing the end of it, although the weather forecast says that there's a possibility of more rain to follow. So, Jim?
Do I want to think?
Yeah.
Don, is there a route to Oklahoma City from the west side of Guthrie?
We've been through that many times today with, today with ODOT, and it changes by the minute. A little while ago, there was no route.
So, right now, there's no route. We'll, we'll try to keep you posted as best we possibly can. But folks, there's more rain, there's more water coming. There's more water coming down the road. Just, just one last comment. We, we are still looking for applicants for forestry, our forestry board, the Board of Adjustment, and the Guthrie Housing Authority. The forestry and Board of Adjustment close the first of June, the Housing Authority the end of June. So those are just some opportunities to get more engaged in your community and, and make a difference. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we have no more items on the agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you.